Okay, well, thank you. We are going to call this meeting to order. My gavel here. So this is the regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, September 9, 2020. And may we please have a roll call?
Yes, I'll call everyone for a roll call. Councilmember Hubbard?
Here.
Councilmember Mosca?
Here.
Councilmember Crand?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Here.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Here.
The record will show that all members of the city council are present.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I will. So before we begin, I'll introduce you to the flag that I'm using. So this here is a memorial flag that was given to my great Aunt Lou. Her name was Lou Shea, and that's why my name's Kelly Shea. And so this is the flag we'll be using. She served in the Army and more. I'll put it here. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for coming up with that. Okay, now we now we have any oral communications?
Yes, Mayor Blake Spear, we do have three oral communications. The first is Fred Lara. Fred, are you on the line? Lauren, is Fred on the line?
Fred is not on the line.
Okay, how about Kamisha Afghan?
She's not on the line either.
How about Becky Rapp?
She is on the line.
Okay, Becky, if you can hear me, you can start whenever you're ready. And a reminder that you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, city council members, for this opportunity to share with you an apprehension that I have as a parent and public health advocate. As you know, in the November election, Encinitas has a ballot measure, Measure H, that would bring pot shops and cultivation to the city. I hope as policymakers and citizens, we are aware of the flawed provisions in this ballot measure, which bring marijuana stores, farms, kitchens, and factories to Encinitas without city control over their permitting and review process, which makes it unique among businesses in Encinitas. The language in Measure H is binding and cannot change without another expensive ballot initiative for which Encinita citizens pay. The negative impact marijuana businesses could present in the meantime is monumental. Yesterday, we had a real-life example when seven people died at a suspected marijuana grow and sales site just east of Temecula, where my sister lives. While the details are murky, it seems to be a tragic shooting involving that marijuana business site and those who wanted marijuana, a very lucrative product. Encinitas does not need to be a marijuana destination. Thank you for this opportunity to share my concern.
Thank you, Becky. Is Fred on the line? How about, is Kamisha on the line? Warren, can you see if either of them are on? No?
Those two are not on the line.
Okay, Mayor, then that does conclude oral communication.
Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar, which is Items 8A through 8I. Do we have any items?
Before we do, excuse me, Mayor, before we do consent calendar report from closed session, there is none. And then there are no changes to the posted agenda. And then no one has told anything from the public for the consent calendar.
And I'll move the consent calendar, providing none of my colleagues wish to take an item off.
I'll second it.
Okay, we will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Crand?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion does carry unanimously.
Okay, great. Now we're on to action item 10A. And we will have just a very brief staff report. Or do we have any public comments on 10A?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I will do a very brief staff report. So before you tonight, I can get into work. There we go. It's the sidewalk vending operations and issuing authority for a specific operations permit. And so just to give a brief history, on January 1, 2019, SB 946 established a statewide governance of vending for public parts and rights of way. And we first discussed this on August 26. At that meeting, City Council introduced ordinance 2020-15 and also reviewed the draft sidewalk vending operation permit policy at that meeting. The meeting tonight is for a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020-15. And on the slide is kind of a synopsis of what that ordinance includes. The main item that it does is establish Chapter 6.15, which permits the council to adopt a policy regulating sidewalk vending via resolution. And so before you tonight as well is the Resolution 2020-66. And this is going to establish that sidewalk vending operations permit policy that we discussed at that August 26 meeting. And it provides definitions as well as the operations permit process and standards for issuance, as well as the operation regulations and the prohibitive activities and locations, as well as the enforcement penalties and replication and appeals processes that are in accordance with the state law. Lastly, before you tonight is Resolution 2020-76. And this is to establish a permit fee as well as a renewal fee. Proposed tonight is the sidewalk vending operations permit fee of $160. And this is based on a 70% return based on the cost associated with issuing that permit, as well as a renewal fee. And that cost proposal was part of that resolution on Exhibit A. In the policy that's part of 2020-66, there is a section that identifies the Development Services Director to annually review the fees and to determine whether those fees are adequate to cover those costs. And they could then amend this permit fee that is being established via Resolution 2020-76. So staff's recommendation to City Council tonight is to adopt a City Council ordinance 2020-15, as well as Resolution Number 2020-66 for the operations permit policy, and adopt Resolution 2020-76 for the sidewalk vending operations permit fee and renewal fee. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I did have one question. So how did we determine a 70% cost recovery for the city?
That is the cost recovery that's typical for the Development Services Department.
I see. Okay, so that's in line with all the other permits?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move approval.
Second, excuse me, I'll second.
I'll second that too. Madam Mayor, I just have a question in line with what you were just asking.
Yes, go for it.
So Jennifer, so just kind of drilling down a little bit more on that response. So is the policy regarding cost recovery, is it set at 70%? Or you did an audit and found that the permit fee set at a certain certain amount was consistent with what other cities were charging? And then that kind of resulted in a 70% recovery?
No, the 70% recovery is a city application to our costs. I learned that from Roy when we were going through this process. But we did also look at the other cities and see what they were charging. And this is in line with what other cities are charging.
All right, so we basically did an analysis of what it cost us. And then we chose 70% because that's the policy we have for Development Services. And then that amount just so happened to coincide and is consistent with what other cities are charging.
Right, so they range from, I want to say about $90 to over $200, and so the average is about $150. So this is pretty consistent.
I know this isn't necessarily in your wheelhouse, and I suppose I can ask Lillian or Roy in another time. But, you know, just interested in, you know, if it were, if it happened to be Parks and Rec, I'm all about getting less than 100% recovery. But when it comes to Development Services, I'm wondering out loud why we would have a policy of 70% cost recovery? Why would we not push that higher? But that may not be something that is relevant right now. I just, I put that out there because I know that Lillian's on the line. And perhaps at some point, we can talk about why that 70% is there, as opposed to 100% cost recovery. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion and a second?
I had raised my hand also.
Sorry about that, Councilmember Crand. I didn't see that. Go for it.
I also wanted to just kind of emphasize the issue related to the resale certificate requirement for any potential sidewalk vendor, so that we don't leave the impression that our brick-and-mortar businesses who are dutifully collecting sales tax on behalf of the state and the city and the county aren't the only ones doing that. That these sidewalk vendors are also required to have that resale certificate and collect sales tax. If I'm reading the policy correctly, and the requirements for the permitting is, can you confirm that for me, Jennifer?
They are required to get the state, they just get the state's certificate as well, as well as our city business registration. So then we will establish what that tax rate would be.
So the permitting process under the city is going to include insurance, sales tax, the resale certificate for the collection of sales tax, a number of other things that are not unlike the requirements for the other businesses in towns in the city. So thank you very much for that info.
You know, I think Councilmember Crand hit on an important point, as he always does, which is that, we said this at the first time, on the first reading of this ordinance, that a lot of this came to a front because of state legislation. State legislation that allowed for sidewalk vending operations in the city. And what we're doing is kind of catching up to what state legislation says and starting to regulate it, so that we're basically having some controls over our public spaces. And so this wasn't something initiated by the city of Encinitas. This was, you know, essentially state legislation allowing this to happen. And then we're basically, you know, coming in and trying to regulate it and stay within the confines of that legislation and not overstep what the state has done in terms of state legislation. I think it's important to say that, just so that folks don't think that we're, you know, kind of allowing for, you know, this type of competition with bricks and mortar type of storefronts. And perhaps people don't want to see sidewalk vendors on their sidewalks. And so I think it's important just to note that this is not an initiative of the city council, but essentially, we're trying to regulate this as well as we can.
Great points. I'm glad that you brought that forward for clarity. Okay, let me look down the line here. I don't see any other hands, so let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, Mayor, and the motion was to approve the recommended action, which is adopting City Council Ordinance 2020-15, Resolution 2020-66, and Resolution 2020-76. And we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca? Oh, Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Crand?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So now let's move on to the next item, which is Item 10B. And this is the Subcommittee Recommendation for New City Managers' Appointment and Employment Agreement. And the contact people are Mayor Blake Spear, me, and Councilmember Mosca. So I do have a little bit of information about the contract to share. And that, they are the following details. So I think that the new city manager Pam is on the line. Is that true? I don't see. Oh, she is. Okay, great. So before we call on her to just say a few words of introduction before I do that, I'm just going to share some of the details of the contract. And just so everybody knows, this is a requirement under state law, so that it is publicly disclosed what is in the contract.
Madam Mayor, do you think it would be good to kind of queue it up for the public? Because some people may not, this has been going on since May or June. And some people may not know of the process that we've gone through, the extensive process to search for, you know, for a new city manager and how we kind of found Pam?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you. So our city manager, former city manager Karen Brest, retired close to five years with the city. And she was a great city manager. We all parted on good terms. And I hope she's enjoying her retirement. I don't know if she still watches council meetings, but I know at the beginning she was watching them. So we are sad to see her go, but we're also really excited about who's coming. So we began a search process, and we hired Dave Morgan, who's been an excellent representative, helping us field candidates. And we had a lot of candidates. And he described it as one of the strongest pools of applicants that he has seen. And that is partly because Encinitas, largely because Encinitas is a very desirable community to live in and work in. And so we interviewed, seriously considered about two dozen candidates, and then narrowed it down to interviewing six. And then we chose Pam. And we are so excited about her. She's coming from Santa Barbara, worked previously in the city manager's office in Palo Alto and Rancho Palos Verdes and other cities, also in Michigan. She has a long record. And we are, I'm excited about her bringing her energy and enthusiasm for our city and also the background that she has from all these different cities and best practices and different ideas about how we can implement and do great things here in the city of Encinitas. So we then proceeded to negotiate the contract. And it is for people who are concerned about fiscal costs. This contract is actually less than our previous city manager's contract. And what it is, is an annual base salary of $250,000, a car allowance of $500 per month, cellphone allowance of $100 per month, and an annual contribution of $15,000 to a 401A deferred compensation plan. And then there's reimbursement for relocation assistance of up to $12,000 and rental assistance up to five months, not to exceed $25,000, with payback provisions should the city manager leave within the stated period. And this is in Section 7D, if anyone's interested in looking at it. It's in the agenda, the actual contract. And then there's a vehicle allowance of $500 per month and a cellphone allowance of $100 per month. And then the same health benefits as other miscellaneous employees. And other terms, of course, as well. So I'd like to invite my council member, who was on the Subcommittee to Negotiate, Councilmember Mosca, would you like to say anything more?
No, I think you said it well. I just echo the mayor's comments in saying that I'm happy with the process. I've been through these processes now a couple of times, not only with our city, but with the San Diego County Water Authority, our searcher for the general manager there, and also now with San Diego Community Power, looking for a CEO. And I do think that Dave did a great job for us. And we had just about 60 candidates that applied for this position. So as the mayor said, this was a really great, robust search. And Pam is an excellent, was an excellent candidate and will be an excellent city manager. Very excited to work with her. Just a couple of things. I think the city staff report really hit on a lot of the major points, and the mayor just did as well. The salary, I think, is a very prudent salary, and it's in line with what other city managers are getting in our area. Typically, we look at, you know, there's several cities that we compare ourselves against. And the salary is, you know, Karen's salary was just about $260. This is $250, and Karen was at median. And so this is slightly below median salary. But I think it's a good spot for Pam because of her experience and background. Also, Karen had deferred comp at $20,000. You probably will recall that, based on performance valuations and strong performance in the past, that that had moved up. And so we thought it was fair to reset it back down to 15. And that's, again, in sync with what is fair market value compared to those other cities. What is different, I think, are the new provisions for relocation. The last couple of city managers did not have that because they were local. In fact, our last one, Karen, was an Encinitan. And so this wasn't relevant. But when you look at what is standard for relocations within the public sector, not private sector, but within the public sector, this is very, very reasonable, $12,000, as the mayor was talking about, relocation for relocation assistance, and the $25,000 for five months of rental assistance. I think it's really reasonable. I encourage you guys to ask any questions and to support this contract and just get on our way of working with our new city manager. I'm very excited to have her here with us.
Well, thank you. And one last detail, and then I'll call on Councilmember Hubbard, is that it's a relatively quick process to have somebody retire and then have another one onboard in six months. So we really did work quickly to make that happen, and everybody had a sense of urgency about it. And I'm grateful that Pam was able to leave Santa Barbara, give notice to her city where she's been for close to five years, and get going with us quickly too. So it's really been extremely efficient and well-run, well-organized. Councilmember Hubbard?
I just want to say a couple of things, and especially for the public who's listening in. I think when you hear these numbers and you don't really know what a city manager does, you can kind of go back and think, wow, this is a lot of money, okay? And what I want to say is, when you work with the city manager and you realize it's a hard job, and they earn every dollar that we pay them, and I don't know that people realize that. The other thing is to remember that anytime there's an emergency in the city, she's the one who's called first. She's sort of the frontline of anything that can happen, whether it's a wildfire, a flood, when we have a lot of rain, any of those things. She's pretty much on call 24/7 for any emergency. So I just kind of wanted to put a shout out that this person earns their money, and they work hard. So that was my two cents. My other thing that I wanted to mention was, I'm really pleased that she's coming onboard. And when we looked at different resumes and interviewed the different people, and maybe I think to share that all of us were in the interview process when we got down to the last six. And then, of course, we had the Subcommittee that took it forward once that person was chosen. But the great thing is because we have strong candidates, and especially with Pam, that she worked in coastal cities, which means that she has some of the familiarity with things like Coastal Commission. And in Santa Barbara, they had a train, you know, they had railroad tracks that went through. So a lot of the issues that we deal with are ones that she's already dealt with. And the more places that you have worked, and she's got extensive experience in many different cities, you pick up many different ways to do things, and we're going to get the value of that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for focusing on that. And I've also heard positive feedback from community members about her looking for a home in Encinitas. So living here and having that as her goal, I hope she's able to accomplish that. And then also, just to your point, Councilmember Hubbard, I thought it is a good point about recognizing what this job is, because a lot of people don't interact with the city manager. They interact maybe with their electeds or other people on staff. And if you looked at a company that had the revenue per year that we have, which is about $100 million a year, you would have the CEO making substantially more than that. So part of it is the civic good and the reality that people who go into working for municipalities have a sense of wanting to help the public in a general sense. And so they make that choice. But it really is a salary that is fair. If anything, it's probably low compared to what you would get in the private market. So let's see. Councilmember Mosca, do you have your hand up again?
Right. And I just wanted to also just, again, point out that we did a salary comparison. And we know that, based on our last city manager, that she was paid right in the median of what other city managers were paid within the region. And that this city manager will be stepping into this role at a COVID period at a lower salary and lower benefits than our prior city manager. So she is slightly below the median for city managers, though we're not thinking that other city managers are getting an increase right now because of COVID. But that is a reality for us in the future. You know, this is, why do we look competitive, you know, look at these salary ranges and make sure that we want to kind of stay within that median and stay competitive? Because we want to make sure that we're hiring the best people throughout our entire structure. The other thing that I just want to be, I just want to make clear, based on the comment by Councilmember Hubbard, and I may have misunderstood what you said, Councilmember Hubbard. But I just wanted to say that the city council, you know, unlike other times, perhaps when we hired a city manager, the city council did not create a Subcommittee to hire the city manager. We basically, this city, whole city council, conducted all of the interviews, the two panel discussions, interviews. And then right down to the last panel interview with the top two candidates, the city council chose the top candidate, Pam. And then we set up a Subcommittee to negotiate the contract. But all of the city council members were involved on the choosing of the city manager.
Great. So let's invite Pam to say a few words if she would like to.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I am so humbled and beyond excited to be selected as the next city manager. I'm really ready to roll up my sleeves and get down there and get started. And my family and I can't wait to move south. We are already beginning our housing journey and getting our house ready for sale here in Santa Barbara. So we're super, super excited to become a part of the community.
Well, thank you. We can't wait for you to get here. And your start date, if I recall correctly, is October 12. So that's just a little bit more than a month. So that's a lot to do in a month. Do we have any public comments on this, city clerk?
No, we do not.
Okay, I see one other hand is up, but I can't see who it is. It's, oh, maybe that was Pam. Okay. So I will go ahead and move approval.
Second?
Okay, we will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes, and I'm excited.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes, and equally is excited.
Councilmember Crand?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And I would like to, I see Dave's on the line. I would like to thank him for all his efforts. It was very well done. This is the second recruitment for a city manager that I've been involved in. And it was really impressive how smoothly it went. And I too am excited to have Pam joining the city, and I look forward to her getting onboard on the 12th.
Okay, great. Well, that's a wrap on that item then. So we will, thank you, Pam. We will see you later. Now, we finished our agenda, so we don't have any informational items or councilmember-initiated items. Are there any councilmember reports that anybody would like to share?
Madam Mayor, you went kind of faster. And so I do have one in terms of initiated items. I don't know if it's initiated. I just, I want to initiate a comment tonight, and that is directed to our interim city manager, who has done an amazing job as interim city manager, Jennifer Campbell, our former director of Parks and Rec and Cultural Arts, and now our interim city manager. We're so happy and excited and really pleased with everything that you've done as interim city manager and just so grateful and thankful that you stepped up when you did. I know that it's a lot of work, and so thank you for everything that you've done. And I know that, you know, that I'm joined by my city council colleagues when I say, we hope that you stay with us as long as possible and that you're with us at the most senior levels of our city government, because you've done an excellent job at a very difficult time. So thank you.
Councilmember Mosca, Mayor Blake Spear, Deputy Mayor Hensy, Councilmember Crand, and Councilmember Hubbard, thank you. I'm very excited. I'm not going anywhere. I love this community. I was able to talk to our new city manager. This is a dream come true, and it's a dream place. I can completely understand why everyone wants to work here. You have me for as long as you will let me stay, and I look forward to a blossoming career here in Encinitas. And it is a pleasure to work with you and an honor to work with all of our staff and all of our residents. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the wonderful comments, and I will always be here for you no matter.
be here for you no matter what, and for the new city manager.
Jennifer, you did a great job.
And I would remind you that staying for for many years is going to be dependent upon the new city manager, so you keep in touch with her.
I will do my best.
Yes. Did you want to say anything more, Councilmember Hubbard?
No, that was all. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. Yeah, and I agree absolutely 100% with everything Councilmember Mosca said. I think we all do. You you have had a very steadying presence following in Karen's footsteps, because everybody knows you and the city staff, and you you know the community so well, and you've worked so closely with us. You know, you filled in a lot of times when Karen was gone, and so we had a great comfort with you, and I think you did a fantastic job. So thank you for for all that you've dedicated. I know that it's very time-consuming and and stressful, and so we're really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So anybody now want to say any councilmember reports? I will give a councilmember report on Sandag. So this Friday is the Audit Committee that is considering an audit report from our independent auditor, and there are a lot of allegations related to compensation of executives at Sandag who have left. And then there is a robust response from the management that that is in large part talking about the application of certain laws and not the application of other laws as being relevant to organizations like Sandag, which are specific in terms of who has delegated authority to make decisions, the board or the executive director. So the process is that we will, I'll be watching the Audit Committee, I think many of us will, and then after that, it will come to the Sandag Board to consider these reports more fully. So you may have seen something about this in the newspaper. I think at this point, it's premature to say anything definitive. We have to let the process play out a bit. There's already been an outside legal opinion that's been offered, so I expect to have more information to provide to you and the community at a later date. So anybody else with any outside boards?
I don't have any outside boards, but I would like to hear from Councilmember Mosca relating to the actions taken at CWA regarding the parallel pipeline. And and can you give us a little brief explanation of how that went and what your position was?
Sure. Yeah, so for those that are just kind of catching up on this issue, our San Diego County Water Authority has been in litigation with MET, Southern California Metropolitan Water District, for some time. Currently, how we get a lot of our water is through their infrastructure. And and so in the in the future, the San Diego County Water Authority has been looking at other options for for moving water from the Imperial Imperial Valley, where we get a lot of our water from the Colorado. And the county water authority has been looking at an alternative alternate conveyance system. So far, we've looked at part of, we've we've commissioned a study to look at whether it was feasible. And and last last month, we had a vote on whether or not we wanted to move forward with additional parts of that study. We voted to take a pause, a three-month pause, and to work with all the different stakeholders to to kind of understand whether or not what, you know, what makes sense for the region and whether or not this is financially prudent investment. And I voted to pause for right now, and which is which is what I believe is consistent with the interest of San Aguita Water District. I've had conversations with our general manager. Also, we participated in studies with the Leavenheim Municipal Water District, SNAFA Irrigation District, and other districts that looked at the financial analysis of this conveyance system, and really had some questions about whether or not it was financially prudent and made sense. And so this pause will allow the staff of CWA to work with all of the various stakeholders, including our general manager, and the general managers of all the other water districts that put the study together, to answer questions and determine whether or not it's it's it makes sense. So that's, so I voted to take a pause on it, so right now.
Maybe Deputy Mayor Henze can can see about bringing that to an agenda for the Water District, so that we can get a little bit more information about what the interests of the Water District are perceived to be, and and maybe have a better understanding of of the project itself. I've only had the media reports, and and I know as anything, any project that spends billions of dollars, there are pros and cons, and certainly groups that will take a particular position, and I'd like to have an idea of how to navigate that and what what the interests of the local water districts might be.
Yeah, no, that I I mean, I I gave it a really short abbreviated kind of kind of summary, but it is very extensive. This is ongoing and has multiple layers of 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 kind of understanding here. And so, you know, absolutely, I would, we can ask Carl to to bring it back at another time, so we can kind of dive into the project itself and what the status of that project is right now. The project is really kind of in initial studying of this project. It would it would take decades to actually to move through the entire process of of looking at the financial feasibility, the the environmental impacts, and and then actual construction of that that project. But would be happy to work with Carl and Kelly, Deputy Mayor Henze, to make sure that it's on a future agenda.
Great.
It's a good idea. Yeah. I'd like to ask the city Acting City Manager to just give a brief update about what the staff is putting together related to Vulcan and Northwest Lucadia.
Thank you, Mayor Blakespear. So what we're working on with staff and Development Services, and Lillian is also here. So what we're working on for the for Northern Lucadia is, first of all, we're going to put together a list of all of the projects and improvements that have happened in the North Lucadia area. We are going to put together a list of all the projects and improvements that are coming up in the Northern Lucadia area. We are also looking at different ways to pursue a Northern Lucadia crossing across the rail, which there's a couple of different options that we are looking at. With that, we're looking at costs and timelines, and we are also looking at the different development that's happening in Lucadia area, and the timeline of when some of that development will come in and how it may impact the area, and how staff will be prepared for that. And with that, also with these improvements, it's also, it'll be, it's a list of bike and pedestrian, as well as road and sidewalk and different improvements. So we're planning on putting that together so that we can go ahead and let council know what we're doing, so that we can also communicate to our public, especially our folks in North Lucadia, who have a great interest in this area. So we want to put together what we've done, what's coming up, and some of the possibilities that we may have. So we are currently working on that with staff, so that we can bring that to council to let them know and some of the options that we have. Of course, some of the impediments that we do have, as we know that, you know, we do have some fiscal constraints, we're working on those, and we want to make sure that we're managing everyone's expectations, and that whatever we can put together, we can deliver with timelines and budgets, and just try to make the best decision for our North Lucadia residents to get them what they want.
Okay. And so just to be clear about what that that you're putting together is, are you envision, is that a document that's going to be on a council agenda or on consent, or is it going to be a presentation, or is it just going to be distributed to us?
Thank you, Mayor Blakespear. I I mean, obviously, we're going to vet that through, what whatever we present to council, you know, we want to go ahead and vet and make sure that there are good possibilities. So I think an informational item would be great, because obviously, we have many residents that are interested in that and are looking for that, and I think with transparency. So of course, yeah, we we will go ahead and vet that through council and through the public as well, so that folks know and get the information in that way if they have questions or comments. But it would be an informational item at first, until we're able to make decisions on what might be able to move forward. But at least we can update folks on what's been happening in that North Lucadia area.
And I would, I would, I would say that, you know, it would be beneficial, I know that Ed Wimmer, the city engineer, has been very effectively listing all of things that are going on around town regarding capital improvement projects and and other public works items of interest to not only the council members, but the public. So, you know, it would be my hope that maybe one way to reorganize that email that he sends out would be by by regions, either by council districts, or in this particular case, there's a focus on North Lucadia. But I think there would be some benefit to to regionally listing those projects. I know the city website has some of that going on, but I don't think it gets updated quite as often as Ed's email. So I think that, you know, it'll be very useful for me when I'm talking to a resident of the north part of the city. I can, I can point to this particular list, and so I look forward to having that. But I appreciate all the work that our Development Services Department has been involved in. I know they're up to their eyeballs in stuff and some very important stuff, so I thank them for that, and I look forward to being able to consolidate regional projects so that they, so that the people in those areas can see in a quick glance what's going on.
Yeah. And I might, I'll go to the deputy deputy mayor in a second. But I I mean, I might suggest that we do this next week, because we have a light agenda next week, and I I don't envision that you have to do a lot of additional work. I because the, like Tony said, it's, it is in some of these reports, and Ed has the information. And so part of it is putting it together in a way that that is clear for the public to say this, these are the things that are happening in that corridor, these are the things that will happen, and what is the date of those things that will happen? And and when are the decision points for things that are not yet decided? So if we are talking about an undercrossing or a bridge at La Costa, or is that's a decision that would be made at the budget time, and when that is, and when they would be able to, when people who care about this would be able to weigh in? Or if we're having a strategic planning session about the diff, all the different improvements and what the options are, I think it would be useful to have that. And I might suggest that it doesn't have to be a long staff report. I think you could have a light staff report next week, but then just put it into the oral presentation. So I'll.
Mayor, I'd like to call on Lillian, Development Services Director. I know Lily and I discussed this. So Lillian, being able to do that for an informational item for next week, how thorough do you think that we can make that? I obviously know sometimes getting prices for things can be, you know, obviously with estimates and things like that. Will that be possible for next week?
Honestly, to provide a fully informed work product that provides the type of information that would allow the public to meaningfully comment, I do believe it would take a little bit more time, because the number of actions that are being looked at and reviewed and are in progress in the North Lucadia corridor in specific, they're tremendous. Not only that, we are expecting to receive bids on the streetscape construction management this week. And so many of the engineering staff will be focused on that effort. We are expecting quite a few responses in support of that, which is great news overall, the amount of interest that we have in our city and the construction projects that we're doing. The Vulcan corridor is something that we are all focused on. We are aware that the residents, it's very important to them that we move forward with mobility, understanding that there are development projects in those areas and that will affect them. And we owe it to them to provide them with good information, and and I I would hesitate, I would be hesitant to commit to be able to provide that type of presentation by next week.
Mayor Blakespear, maybe what we could do, and Lillian, is I think that we could definitely provide a list of the improvements that have been done, the improvements that are on the table and timelines. I think what just might take a little longer is discussing some of the crossing options and some of that cost estimate. So we could next week do an informational item on what's been done, what is already in the pipeline and coming down smaller. But I think some of the bigger things, like a crossing option, those are going to take a little bit longer, but at least it would give folks an idea of what we've done, what's coming up. And then we could definitely come back with a more elaborate report that would have the cost estimate, some options, when we would bring decision-making to council. But we certainly could do a brief, I think, informational item, because we do have a very light agenda for next week on that, Lillian. We could do that.
Okay. Yeah.
The thing I would add, Mayor, that are some of the things that might be omitted from that are things like the quiet zone analysis, all of the analysis necessary for traffic calming along Vulcan, all of those items that we that also interweave with the infrastructure associated with utilities and and the requirements of those things. We haven't had an opportunity to really evaluate bike and ped passage, so some of those items would be missing. Talk about the major railroad crossings, those locations that would be preferred. And to Jennifer's point, I would just want to mention that we are not prepared to provide cost information at that at the time.
I think that's okay, isn't it? I mean, can't we just have, some of those items just can have question marks? I mean, you can have some of the part of it that's very detailed, and as you get into the things that you don't have, they could be at the bottom and be, these are still to be determined in terms of exact placement or costs. But it would be great to get our hands around all of it. It's just.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, to me, it would. Yeah, let's hear from the deputy mayor.
I was just going to add that the Cross Connect Study, the city has been working on for a long time with Sandag, had really high engagement from members of the public. And I believe that the draft of the Cross Connect Study will be coming to Traffic and Public Safety Commission on Tuesday, the 15th. I could be mistaken about that, but I think that there'll be a presentation on that that study and that grant grant effort this coming Tuesday. So I think anybody who's really interested in submitting comments or hearing what Traffic and Public Safety Commission has to say, it'd be worthwhile to tune into that.
Yeah, I mean, the staff, whoever, whatever staff is doing that at the Traffic Commission will be fully prepared for that presentation. So the next day here at council, you know, that that could be included as part of it. So, yeah, I I think just having a sense of the whole a bit, and then the the dates for decision points in the future. I mean, we don't expect that you have a cost estimates for and for crossings at Lucadia Boulevard, or, I mean, you know, that, so don't feel, or quiet zones. I mean, we know that we haven't funded any of those things. So in order to have a better sense of it, we would have had to have funded it. But I think just knowing when when those decision points will come up in the future would be useful. So, okay, good. Okay, thank you very much for for accommodating that, and.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And I think, did you, you didn't have another comment, did you, Deputy Mayor?
I did, actually. I just wanted to give a quick update. Councilmember Mosca and I served together on the School District Liaison Committee, and we recently met with that group last week. And school board member Remga Viskanta has decided not to run for reelection, and one of the things that she was really focused on during her term in the last four years was really bringing consensus together about Benita and the street there that is owned in half by the school district. So we had planned a date to have a larger discussion with the neighborhood and about how to best address some of the the challenges on Benita and the circulation related to safer routes to school there. But that had to be postponed, because it was in March, right around the time that COVID hit. And so we will be rescheduling that meeting sometime in the coming weeks, and the hope is just to bring everybody together and really determine the best way forward to address that road, and then see if there's other opportunities in that area, maybe even on Melva, to create some safer ways for students to be able to get to school.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. City manager reports.
Thank you.
City attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just got a report that I think we have slated for next week to have my city attorney performance review, and I just want to say it's been like a year since I've had the privilege of being your interim city attorney, and it has been great. So I look forward to working with you. I know that the Subcommittee of Councilmember Mosca and Hubbard met with me at the beginning of the year. We had a great back-and-forth conversation, and I know COVID hit, and then we've kind of kind of been able to delay this. But I'm excited about that. I intend to have a self-assessment of the projects that I've had the privilege of working with staff and the council on, to hopefully get your feedback in an effort to meet your needs whenever we can. But I just want to take this opportunity to say what a wonderful time this has been for the last year, and I I value it, and I feel privileged to to be working as a city attorney in this interim process. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Leslie. Good. That's nice to hear. Thank you for that update. Okay, well, with that, we are adjourned.